Okay, audience, we had a little bit of a lengthy closed session, so we're a little bit running late on our opening of our session, so our closed session ended at 18:45. So we'll open the new session, City Attorney, or City Manager, excuse me.
Yes, the council met in closed session this evening from 5:30 PM to approximately 6:40 PM. Talk and discussion was public employee evaluation for the city attorney, and there is no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, well, we'll call the regular meeting at my quarter to my clock is 18:46 or 6:46 PM. And Pastor Pete, would you like to lead us in the invocation, please?
Join with me if you will. Father, we're blessed again to ask that you would truly guide and direct this important meeting, as each one represents God's great leadership here in our community, and for that, we're so grateful. We thank you for just a wonderful spring and for the beauty of this particular community. We also thank you, God, for its residences and all the things that make this the city that we're so proud to be a part of. I ask that you would guide and direct and all the deliberations, and that through the things that are decided, that it would definitely be a blessing to all. We would ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, Jim, would you please move by his seat, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bonner.
Here.
Councilmember Castillo.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Absent from today's meeting is Mayor Protem Aaron Krenz.
All right, thank you. Okay, I need the approval of the council agenda.
I move to approve agenda.
Wait here a second.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Jim. Excuse me, Jim Randall. Chamber liaison.
Yeah, isn't that a great title?
I like it.
Yeah. It's almost like a demotion. I go president of the liaison.
At least you got a job.
That's true.
That's a title.
Yep. I'd like to begin with thanking everyone who supported the chamber's recent golf tournament on March 16th at the country club. It was our largest tournament ever with 125 golfers, and we had 150 dinner guests. It was a great day, and golf course is in pristine condition. I want to thank all our generous sponsors and volunteers, and thank you to Pat Kimball and his staff for helping us plan and put on the great tournament. And thanks to Chrissy and Christina and the country club staff for attending all the guests. We invited and sponsored a junior golf foursome this year. And it was, and I know I'm going to mess these names up, but bear with me, Nixon, Lawrence Simpson.
Lawrence.
Yeah. Trinity Wheelock, Thomas Little, Zaley Wheelock. They won the Jack and Jill at a minus nine.
Wow.
Right? It was, I enjoyed it, because my daughter was in the Jack and Jill with her husband, and all night I had to keep reminding her how bad she got beat.
Oh, no.
And I want to congratulate the winning senior foursome of Bobby Gunther, Gil Cervantes, Jack Gray Senior, and Fred Hemborg. The winning open foursome was Greg Perry, Jonathan Huckins, Jason Jurgian, and Bobby Osterhop. All right. Longest drive was Stan Gonzalez, and closest to pin was Councilman Jeremy Smith.
Which pin was that on?
Seventeen.
I don't remember.
I think seventeen.
Yeah, I think it was seventeen. No, it wasn't seventeen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen, yeah. Yeah, it couldn't have been seventeen.
I always write on the pin.
On seventeen? Yeah, right. Actually, we've been very busy, and people are wondering what we're doing. We got a lot of new members. We did, we have Anderson Chevrolet, the new owners of Bombshells, Chase Bank, Driver's Choice Insurance, Decompress Express, McKee Plumbing and Fit Body Boot Camp. We did the ribbon cutting for the Grand Open at Driver's Choice on March 14th, and we did our first, say first, the first one I was ever involved in, tri-chamber ribbon cutting at Anderson Chevrolet. And I'd really like to thank Mayor Green, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Bonner for representing our city that day. It was last Friday. And we are having a meet the candidates at the, that are ready for the POA board on Tuesday, April 9th at 6:00 PM at the Magnolia Room, which is downstairs of the golf club. Bring your questions. The five candidates will be there, Jenny Odell, Chris Bullen, Mike Harris, Tom Nathan, and Phil Holgood. And with that, Mayor, do you want me to do this for my mayor?
Sure.
Okay.
I think she's going to take photos, maybe.
Wade? Caroline? On behalf of the Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce, we'd like to congratulate you for being voted Best Casual Restaurant by Inland Empire Magazine. Thank you for sharing your talents, serving the needs of those in our community in which we live. We heard that Alan Borgon, food critic, TV and radio host from the show Let's Die Down recently filmed at your restaurant. That had to be exciting. And they did an episode of Urban, and you know when it's going to be on TV?
I don't know just yet. I said, they would get back to me.
Oh, okay, great.
On when it was, and we'll post it on our Facebook and our social media once we find out, so we will let you guys know when the slot is. That's it.
Oh, be sure to frame that.
Anything you'd like to say? Yeah, I just want to thank the community for all their support. You know, we couldn't do this and be successful without the support of the community, and also the endorsement of the whole board. And, you know, being able to have kids here, live here, and work here is rewarding all around.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, for those in the audience, we did honor the Urban at the joint POA city meeting as one of the recipients of the awards. We actually had two people, Student of the Month, and their restaurant, so congratulations again, and look forward to hopefully seeing some good TV from you guys. It's going to be reality TV.
Yeah.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, if I can, real quick.
Yes.
You know, I want to give a big shout out to the chambers. You guys are crushing it, seriously. The relationships that you have with our boring cities and some of the businesses that we have that we're working with, you're doing a really good job, and it's pretty phenomenal to see the numbers of participations that we have with our chambers when we're such a small city. But you guys have managed to really do some good PR and nothing but positive things, so I'm excited to be part of a city in the chambers that has such a good reputation throughout the community as we do. So kudos to you. If you could give her a round of applause, seriously.
Jim, go to the mic, because they complained at home and they can't hear us.
Okay. Thank you. I just want Mayor Green and Mr. Smith and Mr. Bonner to understand, I stayed over a little bit at the Anderson. By you three being there, did not go unnoticed by the owner himself. I just wanted to let you know that. It was the only city represented by council at the tri-chamber ribbon cutting, so thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right. All right, Madam Clerk, would you lead, read the public comment statement.
Thank you, Mayor. Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. We'll start off with Darcy Burke.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and guests. First, I just wanted to say I had the opportunity of attending your joint meeting with the POA, and thank you. Thank you for taking the time, and also for your patience in having people understand the difference between getting to follow the Brown Act and having more of a free-for-all meeting, because some people that don't understand, think it's, they don't understand the purpose, so thank you for that. The first thing tonight I wanted to give you on an update is there will be an alum treatment scheduled on the lake between April 15th and April 19th. I also want to tell you that's contingent that it doesn't rain on the 13th or 14th, which it, at this point, is scheduled to do. So I guess I'd say, plan on it, but be flexible. I'm coming here tonight to really tell you again about the proposed water tax that Governor Newsom has put in his budget language. And we, as a board at Elsinore Valley Miss Water, have taken an opposed position, and I kind of want to tell you why. The intent of it is good. It's for those systems that don't have access to clean drinking water, and during the last weather drought, we heard significant amount of impact to communities like Porterville. And these are usually disadvantaged or severely disadvantaged communities. But I also want to point out that over the past 15 years, we as a state have passed billions of dollars in water bond propositions. Most of that money has gone unspent. In addition, the federal government provides us a drinking water state revolving fund, which has hundreds of millions of dollars that have not been spent in the last three years alone. And the issue tends to be that those small systems, disadvantaged and severely disadvantaged, don't have the technical know-how on how to manage the technology they need to clean up their water, to be able to manage the system as a whole, and to put in a rate structure that one that they can afford, and two, that will support the operation and maintenance of those systems. So throwing more money at an already problem, there's really not, it's not a good solution. So rather, the Association of California Water Agencies and the California Municipal Utilities Association came up with a different operation, and instead of a proposed water tax, which ranges anywhere from 50 cents per household to $10 per household on your bill, rather come up with a trust fund. And that would be, when the state has surplus, that fund would be accessible, and that would augment already the water bond propositions and the state revolving fund money. So that is what Elsinore Valley is supporting. We'd like people to write letters, the council would consider writing a letter opposing the governor's water tax. There's information at evmwd.com, also watertaxfacts.org, and I'm always available to answer questions or help someone understand why this might not be a great idea. I think it's also important to know that within our service area at Elsinore Valley Miss Water, up to 20% is disadvantaged and severely disadvantaged. They would also have to pay that tax, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question for you?
Quick answer.
Okay, that's good. Obviously, your board has done a resolution to oppose it, right?
Correct.
Perfect, everyone's, no interesting comments or anything, everyone's pretty in line with doing that straight up against it?
A water tax isn't an ideal situation for a resource that's life-sustaining, and there's better ways to do it. And I don't, again, think, as does the board, that it's the money that's the issue, it's accessing the money and being able to manage moving forward. So throwing more money at a bad situation isn't going to help it.
Chris, could we look at that for next council meeting, do a resolution, and bring that to council?
Thank you.
I have one other question for you. Three years ago, we passed a significant statewide bond issue to increase our storage capacities.
Prop one, yes.
Additional reservoirs. Is that money, I understand no reservoirs have been constructed as of date, is that due to SEQA? And is it, is that money in a trust?
The money is not in a trust, number one. SEQA is a big part of it.
Yes.
The way the proposition was written, the water, the state water commission actually determines who's eligible to access those funds. So you may have heard of temperate slats, or some of the other reservoirs that they've talked about since before I was born, to finish up the water storage system. The issue that I think is really important to understand is it had to have environmental public benefit as well as water storage, and not every water storage or reservoir project proposed met that criteria. So although the water commission has been critiqued heavily for that, they're really just following the rules of the proposition that which the people passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the update. And for those who don't know what the acronym SEQA is, it's passed back in 1970, and is to protect the environment. And any one of us in this room can file a SEQA complaint, which means that if you see a proposed project for, that maybe, may impingeing on the environment or whatever, they have to go through a review before that project can move forward. So a lot of folks have got a lot of discussion about that particular amendment, which has been around for a long time, and it does impact a lot of development in the state of California. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Joe Comation.
Good evening, council, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm here as a public service to the community Canyon Lake to announce the Speak to the Candidates event. The chambers holding their candidate forum on Tuesday night, our candidate forum, hold that for the camera, our candidate forum is on Monday night, April 8th, this coming Monday, 7 o'clock at the Holiday Bay Room in the lodge. And candidates will be there, and it's an opportunity for homeowners to come out and address the candidates directly. They'll have a microphone, be able to talk to the candidates, ask their question, and respond to their answers. So we hope that we get a good turnout, and our goal is to get as many people in Canyon Lake informed on the candidates and the issues. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
And lastly, we have Travis Montgomery.
Good evening, Travis Montgomery, Canyon Lake. First time I've appeared since Councilmember Smith and Castillo have been here, so congratulations on your election. It's been quite a while since I have been here, but the last two times that I was here, I was airing my concerns and displeasure with the way that Canyon, Railroad Canyon looked, road, Railroad Canyon Road looked, and it looked like we had a lot of purple spaghetti off the side of the road, and I counted hundreds of little sprinkler heads sticking up in the air, abandoned by plants. So I see now that it's pretty much completed, it looks really great. I guess maybe it took a new mayor and a new city manager. You don't want to take the credit, do anyway, because you're going to get blamed for a bunch of other stuff. So go ahead and take that credit, but I just wanted to, since I had spoken about it before and how it looked, let you know that it looks very good now, and it's, you know, nice to our city, because you came up through nice landscaping on both ends of the city, and then you could tell you were in Canyon Lake. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Travis. I would like to extend out to the staff who spearheaded that project. We have other things to maintain our community, which some of you know is the fence and the medium, and our goal is to make our community, when you drive into it and leave it, say that was a really nice trip.
My wife told me, by the way, when I told her I was coming here tonight, she says, remind them about the fence on the golf course.
That's in, that's in our, that's in the harbor.
So I can go home and tell her I did that.
All right, thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
I have one last card, but it's for item number five, so we'll hear the comments at that time.
All right. Just remind me that I don't pass over item number five.
Will do.
Okay, would you, no other comments? Well, let's move to the consent calendar, please.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Does any council member have any recommendations of items to be pulled from the consent?
No.
Hearing none? Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the consent.
In a second, please.
One second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Green.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar with Mayor Protem Aaron Krenz absent.
Okay, since we have no items that are pulled, the scheduled events that we have and future events, those will be on the city webpage, as well as the Friday flyer. And we have some business items. Item number four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. For some time, the city has struggled with a lack of space at City Hall. Most notably, the city has had insufficient space for administrative staff offices, records, storage, and conference room, meeting areas. The council held a special meeting on March 26th, during which staff was directed to sign a lease agreement for approximately 1,371 square feet of office space located at 31526 Railroad Canyon Road, Suite 5, which is directly adjacent to this building we're sitting in today. We anticipate in that space that we will oppose the administrative offices of the city manager, the administrative services manager, the deputy city clerk, finance staff, and our new intern program. We now have to furnish that space and provide computer networking and phone systems to that space in order to make it functional. Staff has been conducting research and soliciting bids from various companies to get a handle on what those costs might be. We're getting close to being at a place where we can start placing some orders. We're still waiting for some final bids to come in. At the time that the staff report was written, our best estimate, really bare-bonesing it, was we think we could squeak it in at about $25,000 all in, but that's really going bare bones. So we dug some more, and our finance director at the Finance and Planning Committee meeting yesterday advised us that we would not have to use the general fund for this, that we could use our capital improvement program funds. We have about $360,000 in that fund currently. The finance director advised us that we could very safely use up to $50,000 of those funds. I don't think we need to spend anywhere near that, but my sense is that this council wants to do it one time and do it right, and have it be a place that projects the image the city wishes to project, and be a professional office where we can hold even private meetings to connect the public's business. So staff is recommending that the city council authorize staff to afford with furnishing the space and providing computer networks, and our phone network in the space. And at this time, we would still like to come in as close to the $25,000 as possible, with a little bit of flexibility, if possible. And a thought that we had was, in order to move quickly and furnish the space and get it up and running, perhaps, without having to come back to the full council a month from now, perhaps the council would be comfortable authorizing the Finance and Planning Committee to work closely with staff, should we need to go over the $25,000 threshold.
Okay, comments from staff?
Just one, first of all, you answered the question about cost.
Me too.
I did get the tour of the new space yesterday, and it's very impressive. It's a laid-out world, and I think everyone's going to be, oh, I'm just, anyway, and then also, you might want to mention that the space that we had in the conference room, the code enforcement, is it, so it's not exactly a total of another 1,300, it's 1,300 minus 750, I think, or something like that.
Correct, yes, councilman. We, currently, we have our code enforcement services, as well as a very small conference room in an area within our current building, but separate from our existing space that we own, and we lease that space. So this new space will allow us to cancel that lease and apply that savings to the new space.
And the council?
I'm excited.
Okay, comments from the public on this item? Okay, hearing none? Let's make a motion, and a second, please, for approval of item number four.
All motions to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Green.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item four with Mayor Protem Aaron Krenz absent.
Okay, thank you all. Item number five, authorization to support the Canyon Lake Golf Championship City Tournament.
Good evening, mayors, city council. Tonight, staff is recommending discussion and possible action to annually support the Canyon Lake City Golf Championship Tournament through sponsorship. Last year, I believe it was June of 2018, both Joe Comation and, who is it, John Kegwin?
Kegwin.
Close. Came here hoping to get council support to help them financially get this tournament going. I think last year was a complete success from what they had reported back to us, so in discussions that I have with the city manager, we approach the idea of maybe this could be a budgeted item that we can do for them, annually for them. We kind of do these sort of things already with other type of things, so last year, we gave an amount of about $1,000, but it's open for discussion as to what is it the council wants to approve for them.
Okay, council, questions? No questions? Wow. Any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Joe Comation.
Counsel, thank you again for hearing us. John Kegwin and I are here to, number one, thank you for your support last year. That was a tremendous boost to our tournament, and it allowed us to, I think, impress a lot of people who came in to Canyon Lake for the first time and played our course. We didn't get as many golfers as we liked, but we got a pretty good response, and we got almost 30 people from outside Canyon Lake to come in and play it. So we consider that a success for our, in effect, our first year of doing this, and we look forward to the city council's decision to support us again for this next year. And I think Mr. Boras said, he gave us 5,000? If I heard him right?
Ah. But if you're willing to go that much, we won't say that. I think, I think you need to look at the print. Either my eyes have gotten bad, but I do have a request, Joe. We at the Admin and Finance Committee talked, and we think it's a great deal, number one. Number two, we are requesting that we, as council members, reach out to our Western Regional Council members who play golf, and we have a separate bracket in this tournament that is only for city council, or city team, teams, for, it depends on how many you want to set up on a scramble or however you do it, but we have a specific group of folks from all the region, cities, because I know Lake Elsinore would like to use our, would like to probably have a trophy from us, and we would definitely like to take it from them. And we have Menefee and Marietta and all the others, and I believe they all could field a team, and I think a couple of things. One, it brings them into our course to see it, also is goodwill amongst our fellow cities, and it's a little bit of esprit de corps. I mean, none of us up here, we always want to win. So if that could be possible, would be greatly appreciated, because we will then circulate that amongst our group, that we, our colleagues in the other cities, and see if we can get a good response.
Absolutely. Excellent idea.
Okay, because I think it really will merit our city, and the goal of the tournament is to bring as many people as we can.
Right, exactly.
So, okay.
We'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Hearing none? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the support of the Canyon Lake City Golf Tournament.
Okay, second, please.
One second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Before roll call, real quick, as part of this discussion, one of the things that, the reasons why staff want to reasons why staff wanted to bring this on the agenda is that we thought it would be helpful, if this is an event that the council would like to do regularly, if council would give staff authorization to just do this as a matter of course every year so that we don't need to bring it to the full council many years. So if that can be part of the motion.
Well, I hope that'd be part of the budget.
We will include it in the budget, but we just want to make sure the council's...
And it would be very similar to us as we do with the chamber.
Correct.
Would be earmarked in our annual of a support.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. That was an admin finance recommendation, too.
Yes.
All right, with that and that amendment, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item five with Mayor Protem Aaron Krenz absent.
All right, item number six.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. This item has been carried over from our last council meeting last month. The council has been concerned about life safety in the city of Canyon Lake. In this city, our fire code is enforced by the county slash CalFire. It came to the mayor's attention, the council's attention, some months back that the county slash CalFire has not been conducting regular inspections of commercial, industrial, and multifamily rental units. Recent events in other cities where these inspections are not done have resulted in property damage, personal injuries, and loss of life. And so, out of concern for public safety, the council started and staff started investigating what might be done by them. CalFire was approached and asked what it would take to start doing these services. They were willing to do them, but indicated that doing so would incur additional costs for the city. And so other avenues have been looked into. At the last meeting, the council discussed whether or not it would be appropriate to adopt an ordinance that really was kind of a workaround that allowed us to do these investigations and checks under the building's safety code, kind of as opposed to under the fire code. Staff was directed to research it further, and we've come to some greater understanding about what our abilities are here. Canyon Lake Ordinance Number 170 was adopted on January 4th, 2017. This is the ordinance that directs the County of Riverside Fire Department and its fire chief to enforce our state fire code. However, this ordinance also makes it clear that our city code enforcement officers have the authority to interpret and enforce the ordinance and the fire code. It's the opinion of the city attorney and of city staff that, in fact, we don't need a separate ordinance, but that under our existing ordinance, we have the authority to enforce the fire code. So our recommendation is that the council direct staff to prepare a plan and execute a plan to start doing these inspections and this enforcement. It would require that we establish a fee schedule. It would require that we come up with the forms that are going to be used, and that we contract with a specialist to help us with the initial inspections alongside our code enforcement and to train our code enforcement, and then our code enforcers would then follow up on the enforcement. If the council would like to go in this direction, we believe that we can have all of that prepared by the May city council meeting. Because of the fee schedule that would have to be put into place, we would have to notice that. I believe it's a 10-day notice that has to go out. We have another, other things that we plan to notice prior to the May meeting, so we would just include that with the others. The city went through a fee study last year and adopted a number of fees in December. That fee study established an hourly rate for code enforcement of $71 an hour. We could apply that rate and add to it the cost reimbursements for any consultant fee. So we would not have to do a separate fee study. We've already established those rates. But if it's the desire of the council to move forward, we're happy to put that together and bring it back to you at the May 1st meeting.
Okay, questions from council?
I have a comment.
Great.
As you know, I had a lot of questions about the version that was presented last time without taking away from the intent of that, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Wamsley, because I remember you made a comment on it and emphasized the importance of this, and I fully agree this is a very important thing, and I'm glad that the mayor pushed hard on this. I wanted to make that known.
Thank you.
I got a question for staff. Have we reached out to an outside entity to find out how much these inspections would cost to get an estimate? Meaning, are bill study on code enforcement at $71 an hour? Is that going to suffice to get it done from an outside entity?
There will be an addition to the $71 to cover the cost of the consultant to do the initial inspections. We don't yet know what that number is. It'll be based on number of hours that the inspections will take. We expect that it won't add a significant amount to the $71, but we can bring that back to you at the May meeting.
Okay, and then the other question is, have we found a placeholder on where the process is? Does it begin when they pull their business license? Is it a yearly thing? Is it quarterly? Where are we planning on, you know, asking our businesses in the community to be a part of this?
Yeah, this has been a discussion that's happened, and I think we touched on this last month as well. Staff's understanding is the council would like us to look at doing this in conjunction with our business license process, so it's more of a one-stop-for-businesses. Now, we might have some existing businesses that will want to, you know, we might want to start some inspections sooner rather than later, but that as a matter of course, as business licenses come up for renewal, we'll make sure that it's part of the process.
Okay, I appreciate it. The idea is the fee, instead of it being a multiple increments, it would be a one-time deal?
Yeah.
And we want to set based on our hourly rate, and there are some other factors that could be into it, depending on what we do in the second piece of this and the third piece, which is the paperwork and the process, which will come back to you. So you got your review before it even goes out. There'll be letters gone out to the entire community on what our intent is, plenty of lead time, so that nobody will be surprised.
Just as long as we're being as efficient as possible, I think. Cutting the red tape in this scenario is extremely important. If we do it right, we'll be doing the right thing by the community, so, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, is it because we're adding the fee schedule and inspection forms and adding a consultant, is that cause, is it going to be cost neutral? Is it going to be cost, is it going to be dangerous?
Sure, the question for Councilmember Bonner is about whether the program will be cost-neutral. Yeah, the purpose of the fee study identifying the hourly cost for code enforcement, and then the purpose of adding on top of that the cost of the consultants to do the initial inspections, the purpose is to make sure that it's cost-neutral for the city.
Okay, any other comments?
One more comment, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. In regards to a situation with a business owner who is having trouble getting in the documents or the paperwork, have we devised a plan on what that's going to look like in regards to penalties, or are we going to work with them for the process?
Our goal is to have compliance, and there will be a timeline that will be established that could be moved based on difficulties that the occupant might be having, but our intent is not to be punitive, it's to be, to give them ample time possibly to work with them in every way we can. It will be a notification process, a first, a second, and a third, so they'll have plenty of time to comply. We believe, based on just the occupancies that we have within the community, we will probably have very low non-compliance.
Yeah.
It might take a second trip, but that would be it.
Nonetheless, you know, I would advise that, Chris, if we work with the chambers on this, you know, as far as the PR side and getting out the information, and we're really working with them, and those are the relationships that are bringing them in, and we want to be as business-friendly as possible in this community, and I think the chambers could advocate for it, that it's not regulation, but it's safety components, so.
And I would like to propose, as we develop the next pieces, that we have actually a town hall maybe, for the business, the POA. I've already talked to the manager, the, this manager of the POA about this. He's totally supportive of it. They want to have their facilities in compliance as much as they can, and they do a lot of good things, so the idea is to get everybody on board and, you know, for all of us. We do have certain occupancies that aren't currently being done, there are state mandates that we hope to pick up and bring us in compliance, so. Madam Clerk, any public comments?
No comments.
No comments? Comments going once, going twice? Okay, can I hear a motion, please, for item six? Motion for item six. Approval.
I put the motion on the floor to approve business item number six.
I have a second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item six with Mayor Protem Aaron Krenz absent.
Okay, would you please read the title of number seven, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Item seven is the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 180, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake repealing and re-adopting Canyon Lake City Code Chapter 11.08 regarding regulatory authority on Canyon Lake.
Mr. Mayor, staff is extremely pleased to bring this item to you this evening. This has been many months in the making. Some months ago, the Parked Owners Association approached the city with a dilemma that they had. They asked the city to establish in our ordinance a specific speed limit on the lake. The challenge for the city is that the city does not have jurisdiction on the surface of the lake, so it wouldn't really be appropriate to have an ordinance that we can't enforce. There was much disagreement on the topic between the POA and the city over the months. In the last two weeks, we've been able to find a solution, working with the city attorney and with the POA and staff, and it's twofold, really. At the heart of the issue is a concern that excessive speeds on the lake can cause damage to dogs and other property. And there have been complaints citing the Harbor's Navigation Code. Working with the city attorney, we were able to identify that the Harbor's Navigation Code applies only to navigable waters of the United States, which the private lake is not. It applies then to our North Lake, but not to the main body of the lake. And so, that new understanding helped make the POA feel a little bit better. But then we were able to craft some language that basically points to the POA and says, "We don't have jurisdiction of the lake, however, we recognize that that jurisdiction lies with the POA, and we support the policies that they set." And that recognition helped the POA feel that we're giving them the support and the backup that they need. They can then point to us and say, "Look, the city officially recognizes our authority here." And so, draft of ordinance number 180 is in front of you. There is a handout that you each have with a little bit of updated language, specifically Section 11.08.030F was not in the original draft but has been added in at the request of the POA. But that is all we have there, and we're excited to hopefully put this to bed in a manner that makes everyone happy.
Thank you. It has been a while. Questions from council?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Since the time of my election, I know, same with Jeremy, we've really tried to work on this for the POA on behalf of the city, and I know Gina Dixon from Code Enforcement has worked on this, the city attorney has worked on it, and it was something we were not willing to give up on, so I'm very grateful that this reads exactly how I envisioned it would read, and I am very pleased.
Good.
Awesome job, Liz.
Yes, thank you, guys. This has been, let's say, a football that's kind of gone back and forth, so. Any public comments? No public comments on item number seven? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I think you should.
I'll make a motion.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
For approval of item seven, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 180 with Mayor Protem Aaron Krenz absent.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, item number eight.
Thank you, mayor. Item eight is the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 181, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake repealing and re-adopting the provisions of Title 10, Keeping and Control of Dogs and Cats, Chapters 10.01, 10.04, 10.08, 10.16, 10.32, and 10.44.
Okay.
Good afternoon, good evening, mayor and council. This background of this repealing and re-adopting of, I'll refer to, Chapter 10 was something that our animal control agency approached council on, asking them to clean up some, change some language, redefine some things that no longer apply as we move forward. A lot of this ordinance was written back in 1991 with the city incorporated. Some of these sections had to do with ear clipping of cats and stuff that they don't typically do anymore, renting of traps that they often don't do but are still willing to do at our residents' request, and they don't charge a fee. It's included in our licensing and control program. So we worked very closely with animal control. We went over the entire ordinance section by section, literally word by word, to make sure that we addressed any concerns that they had, concerns that they couldn't put into words. Betsy was on the phone, our city attorney, to say, "Okay, I know where you're trying to go with this. Will this work for you?" And they agreed. So they have been over and are just over the moon about how closely we work with them on this, and they've actually sent our ordinance out to a lot of the other cities saying, "Can you guys just use Canyon Lake's template because it's perfect?" So staff does recommend that we continue moving forward and repeal the old section which was outdated, and move forward re-adopting the recommendations to Chapters 10.01, 10.04, 10.08, 10.16, 10.32, and 10.44. This did eliminate the pit bull, mandatory pit bull sections as we are no longer discriminatory because we don't want to have to DNA test all the dogs that we need to be spayed and neutered. So this also adds the current up-to-date microchipping requirement that will help return the animals to their lawful owners and prevent them from being illegally abandoned at different cities' rates.
Thank you, Gina. Council questions?
I just want to make one comment. I'm the liaison to the animal friends of the valley, and I also appreciate Casey putting a lot of effort into this, and thank you for what you did.
Yeah, I know, this was a long process again, but thanks to our staff and our council members who diligently tried to gather some sense out of what a very complicated document was, and thank you. Thank you for your efforts, Joe.
Quick question for you. So we're related to Chapter 10, as you said. Are we the first city to adopt and make this change?
We aren't the first city. We actually had our intern at the time take the county's amended ordinance, and then we had to change their language and take things out because we don't have, for example, a Department of Veterinary Services. We don't, our animal control agency contracts with licensed California veterinarians. So there was a lot of verbiage that had to be taken out, removed, and some definitions needed to be redefined. A lot of our ordinance in 1991 said we would be sending out all the notices, we would be delivering, but we don't, we contract. So some people that remained in non-compliance used those definitions as, "The city didn't send me this notice." They were looking for every loophole to get out of having to come into compliance. So by doing this, we're making their job a straight, simple enforcement job, defined as it should be. Would you?
Okay, any public comments on item? Hearing none? A motion, please.
I make a motion for repealing and re-adopting the provisions of Title 10, keeping and control of dogs and cats, Chapter 10.01, 10.04, 10.08, 10.16, 10.32, and 10.44. Keeping and Control of Dogs and Cats, Chapter 10.01, 10.04, 10.08, 10.16, 10.32, and 10.44.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call, please, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 181 with Mayor Protem Aaron Cran's absent.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, would you read the next title, please?
Item nine is the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 182, an ordinance of the City of Canyon Lake amending and superseding ordinance number 174 to include a process for WRCOG calculation and collection of fees under the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, staff is recommending for City Council to adopt an ordinance 182, amending the current city's TUMP ordinance, which I believe is ordinance 174. As a participating member of WRCOG, one of the benefits that they do for us is collect a TUMP fee. A TUMP fee, if people don't know, it's the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee. It's used basically for roads throughout Riverside County. Unfortunately, Canyon Lake doesn't have a specific road identified under TUMP, but because we participate regionally together, we're also obligated to provide a fee for that. So the amendment that we're trying to do here is currently, right now, the fee is taken here in the city, and then distributed to WRCOG. We're trying to bypass that. WRCOG has now given other cities, other members, the opportunity of just direct the fee directly to them and not for our finance folks to have to report and look over. So the amendment is just to do that, is take us away from having to collect the actual fee and have WRCOG collect the fee directly. It just saves time, for all of us, it kind of streamlines the whole process. And for the most part, I think most of the member agencies are all doing this, so we're just trying to follow suit with everybody else in the Southwest Region.
Also, just as an information item, there is a timeline when we mail these fees into WRCOG. If we're late, there's a penalty that goes with that. So this really takes all of those considerations, staff time, preparation time and all that, and transfers that over to WRCOG. Really streamlines our operation.
And in addition to, I think they're going to be able to, I think July 1st, they're also going to roll out something so it can also be done online, so the fees can be picked that way too. Again, streamline and everything, just making things a lot quicker for them.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
And to the mayor, for those that have lived here a long time, we did use TUMP money to expand Railroad Canyon Road.
And as the deputy clerk had mentioned, we have to do a second reading for this, which would be next month.
Next month.
And so, and then I think it goes into effect. But this is our first and our second.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions of?
No.
Hearing none? Okay, any public comments, please, item number nine?
I think Nancy wants to make it.
Nancy Horton.
Nancy Horton, just to clarify, when we did the repaving of Railroad Canyon and expanded two lanes to three, which was very controversial at the time because all of Railroad Canyon wasn't three lanes, we had put in to TUMP fees, our total that the city had ever put into TUMP was $330,000 and change. We were awarded $7 million and change to redo Railroad Canyon Road. It was kind of a strange situation. Big bucks had been given to Temecula and Marietta and other cities, and there was a little bit left over in a fund. And on a Friday afternoon, when I was mayor in 2010, I got a phone call from the city manager asking if we should apply for the funding for Railroad Canyon, and I said, "Yes." Of course, it was due Monday morning, so she worked through the entire weekend and called me a couple of days later and said we were awarded $7 million. So Railroad Canyon is considered one of the roads. Even though we don't have development in Canyon Lake, we provide some fees. And I don't think we'll ever provide enough fees to pay back that $7 million that we were awarded. And who knows when we may have to do it again. So TUMP fees are a very small part of what we do in Canyon Lake, but they can have huge consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comments on item number nine, please? Hearing none? Motion, please?
I'll put the motion on the floor. It's a super grand.
And I'll second.
Second, okay. Item five, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 182 with Mayor Protem Aaron Cran's absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City man, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have a number of items this evening. First, the council has been talking for some time about putting together an evening public safety town hall meeting. I'd like to bring to you a possible date and time for that meeting, if we could check calendars, for Wednesday, May 22nd, at 6:00 PM. That works for everyone. We're still working on the location at the Public Safety Committee meeting yesterday. It was suggested that we look at doing it at Canyon Lake Community Church. I checked with the city attorney, there doesn't appear to be any issues with doing that. So if that sounds good, then we'll pursue that.
And just for clarification, is the gym museum there?
Correct.
Not the gym, J-Bo.
Yes, that's right. Okay. Another calendar item we'd like to do, staff would like to hold a goals session, special meeting with the city council, set priorities and goals for the coming year. We're looking at, let's see here, Tuesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM. And that will be, right now, we're contemplating it will be held here in this room. It's April 23rd, work for a room.
So that's a Thursday.
It's a Tuesday.
That was.
Very good. A few updates to let you know, we have applied again for the SAFER grant. Congressman Calvert's office has offered to help us to the extent that they can, so we're hoping to secure that grant, well, you know, as soon as we have an update there. We, the consultant has been working diligently on our housing element update for our general plan. We're going to need to hold a special council meeting, a workshop in May at some point, to go over the housing element and some new issues that have arisen based on state law. We're looking tentatively at Thursday, May 16th, at 6:00 in the evening, and our consultant will be here, as will our planner, Jim. Yeah, we'll work on that date. There might be a scheduling conflict there, but we're just one and a half hours or so, so we'll work on that date. The council had asked staff to look into our invoicing. Some of our invoices were occurring late payment penalties, and that's just a function of the process that we go through. We get the invoice, then we bring it to the Finance and Planning Committee for review and approval before we process some of those. So we're moving to a system where we pay some of our more routine bills, such as our Southern California Edison bill, which is pretty much the same every month, through electronic funds transfer. And then we will bring that to you after the fact, so that you can see it. So we should be eliminating most of our late payment penalties. The one exception might be our main credit card through US Bank, only because those are not regular standard charges, so we'll probably want to still bring those to you before payment. Those fees are typically very low, but we'll work on that as well, see what we can do there. Council asked staff to look into whether it makes sense to do cash back credit cards. We have our finance staff looking at that, we think that'll be possible, so we're looking at what would make the most sense, what cards. At a future date, probably after the goal session meeting, staff would like to bring to you a review of all of our current standing committees and talk about whether the committees that we have in place still make sense. We might, the council might want to consider making some changes. We have a couple of committees that were established years back that really don't meet on a regular basis anymore, just based on the issues that we're facing. So we might want to do a little bit of cleanup there. Council is doing a kind of review of, staff, I'm sorry, is doing a review of some of our just common operating practices. One of those is the council policy on cellphone reimbursement for council members. Turns out, it's quite an odorous process. It takes up quite a bit of our finance staff time and our city clerk time and council member time for a very small amount of money. So I'd like to get a feel for the council, if that's something that you'd like staff to look into, if there's a more streamlined approach that we can take there. I ask ahead of time because it will probably take a little bit of attorney time to kind of navigate the legalities there, but I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah, if there are any concerns. I think we talked about this in Admin and Finance, and our thought is, it was proposed sometime back, that because of the process that we use, that maybe a flat fee be established for cellphone and internet, and that was established on a monthly basis, and then it's all the same.
Okay, we will look into that. There might be some legalities because it really can't be approached as additional compensation. It needs to be a reimbursement, but we'll see how we can approach it and how we can put something together that's a little more streamlined.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, we'll bring that back to you in May. At the May meeting, I anticipate that we'll have a number of fee updates that have kind of been sitting, waiting in the wings to be addressed. For example, RCA has sent us the updated MSHCP fees that we have to update, but we'll have to do that. The council never adopted updated fees for special events or for filming. We're still waiting on Animal Friends of the Valleys for their updated fees. Still waiting on the BIA for a response. And then, of course, our new fire code inspection fee. So those all require notices to be mailed out, so we anticipate doing that ahead of the May meeting so that that can be on the agenda in May. And I believe that is it for this evening.
Thank you, good report. It's been a while since we had a full report. Okay, nice work. Good job. We'll leave it at that. Committee and council reports and comments, please. Remember, I got to remind everyone, we've got three minutes, so I don't think anybody up sitting up here will have more than that, but if you do, the gong will go off and you'll know. Mr. Bonner?
Okay, on Monday, I went to the RC, WRCOG meeting for Jordan, and it was a very informative meeting. And unfortunately, I can't give the vector that he normally gives because that's more humorous than anything else. But anyway, it was good. I went to the RCTC committee, a normal meeting as a committee as well. And I don't know if I mentioned before, there's going to be a midway, fairway, parkway between Paris and San Juanzito, San Juanzito. But it's probably going to take several years before it gets done, but it's starting with Paris to get, and change off the 215, to get the parkway going. But going forward, it's going to, I think it's going to be a good idea. There was two roundtables, Robben, cutting we did? And one was presented today, and also Anderson Cadillac, and that was done very well, or sherrily, and that was very, very well. And finally, the roundtable is next Monday at 8:00 at the Country Club. That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I would first want to say to my councilmembers, thank you so much for attending the joint POA meeting. I was really sad to miss it. My life partner puts on a training every year in Vegas, and that just happened to be when the first meeting was, but I felt very well represented, and I got so much great feedback from the community on just that first meeting. So I look forward to being in attendance at the next. I am going to be attending a dredge committee meeting tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Monday, along with Ms. Burke and Councilmember Smith, Mr. Wamsley. This is something that obviously is near and dear to Canyon Lake's heart and is obviously a source of interest in the community. I look forward to doing whatever we can in terms of meeting grant requirements in the future on behalf of the city, so I'm excited to attend and learn how we can start the process moving forward. As Ms. Burke mentioned, we are having an alum application tentatively scheduled for April. I did attend the recent TMDL meeting, and there was quite a bit of discussion as to whether or not Canyon Lake needed a modified dosage for the East Bay, given the extensive rains that we've had. And I would like to say that I think that our consultant did quite advocate very well on behalf of Canyon Lake, because in the past, the dosage had been the max, and now we're coming to a smaller amount, and there was a bit of a concern as to whether or not that was going to be sufficient. By all accounts, from the administrators, it appears that it should be, but it is back on the agenda, and I should have more information. We do have a legislature board meeting, as well as another TMDL meeting coming up. I do not know, depending on what happens with, whether or not the application is going to go forward or not, if that will be finalized. And then finally, I guess ancillary to my councilmember duties, I am honored to be one of the elected women who go to luncheons every other month, and I get to actually network with the other elected women in the county, and former Mayor Horton also attends, and so I'm looking forward to doing that again this month.
My turn. Red Mayor, you want to just X me out?
No, no. I was waiting, I was waiting for your computer to key up.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think, first of all, the most important thing is that our city manager's getting married on Sunday. So, you know, round of applause for that. I don't know how much that's costing you, but, you know, she's, yeah, I'm just, exactly. But congratulations, Chris, seriously, enjoy it. And it's an amazing experience, and I'm so excited for you, I really am, take it up. So very interesting month, we were really busy, as most of you can hear from this council. I want to say a special thank you to the staff on the joint city council POA meeting. I think it was very successful, it's our first one. When we're trying to make it up on the fly and we pull it off, I think that's pretty good. A lot of that's to staff. So thank you so much for being patient with us and creating an agenda that makes sense for both bodies, and I think that's a very difficult thing. I also want to give a shout out to Nancy. Thank you so much for coming to our meeting and just illustrating the difference between what is government and what is the private entity of a private board. I think that is so crucial, and she did such a good job of that by saying, "Look on your right, look on your left," and see these two bodies working together. And I think that was the entire vision of both the POA staff and the city council staff. So anyone out there listening, thank you so much for participating in that. I think there was over 1,000 views for that, so obviously, it was well received throughout the community. That was a big one. As far as my agency, I get the ability to sit on RTA, which is Riverside Transportation Agency. What I have to report out of that committee is there's going to be an increase in rates for our bus riders, anywhere between 25 to 50 cents, which is actually extremely low, considering some of our other counties, like Orange County, LA, and San Diego County. So Riverside is doing a good job keeping their rates low. Ridership is going up, and like I reported last month, technology is really starting to advocate for the entire entity with the way people travel, which I'm really excited about, and we're learning a lot from that. The other thing is that our city manager and myself had the opportunity to meet with AMR. And as you guys know, they service our community, and they do a phenomenal job. AMR, and as you guys know, they service our community, and they do a phenomenal job answering the call. So, we're working on some ideas to kind of, to bridge the gap a little bit on how we can utilize them and utilize their services even more. The good news in regards to AMR is they're willing to come to our community and teach CPR for anyone and everyone who wants to learn. So, in line with the mayor's fire code, safety, I think that's a good program that we can implement as well to the chambers for our business, as well coming into the community, "Hey, we want to offer you the service so you can get certified if you like." I think that's a phenomenal program that they're willing to do for Canyon Lake. Other than that, can't thank you enough, Water Board member Ricky, thank you so much for coming forth and giving us an update every single, I think you've been here every council meeting now. So, I know Nancy did that, and it's so good to see that you're doing that, too, and you joined us for our joint meeting, so I can't thank you enough for the participation. It means a lot. Lastly, the ribbon cutting was, I think, a great event. We had three chambers of commerce, three cities were invited, one city showed up. So, you know, who who Canyon Lake? You know, we might be small, but we show up, right? That's the good thing. But I'm so excited to be here, folks, so excited to serve and to work with each and every one of you. Humbled and unblushed, and thank you so much for coming out and participating with us as we look at the business of the city, but that's it.
All right. Thank you. It's been quite a month for us. A lot of things have happened. And just to echo, I think the joint meeting that we conducted a week or so ago went off very well, as Councilman Smith pointed out. Our live feed got a lot of hits. I think it was a good start for us, so we're looking forward to our next one, which I think we can fit all of our rules that we have to be under and yet still have a substantive meeting that all bodies can be happy with. I'm also part of the RCA Executive Board, as well as on the regular board. We met our goal. We've got 70,000 acres that are currently under RCA control right now for all the corridors, and we're in the process of purchasing more. We're after about another $40 million in federal grants. We've been very successful, and we've got folks working on them right now in Washington, DC. I was invited to come to the meet and greet of the new police chief for the City of Menifee. This is his third day today. So, it was a rolling out. He came on board on Monday, and they had this on Tuesday afternoon at their city hall, and a lot of people from within our jurisdiction was there. It was quite refreshing, and it worked out really well. Quite a few ribbon cuttings this month. The Anderson Chevrolet, obviously, was one that we all attended, and it showed quite a bit. I'm honored to do the flag salute for the mayors or for the prayer breakfast that will be coming up next month. And the last, I don't know if you guys have followed what's occurred in our city to the west of us, Lake Elsinore, but Lake Elsinore's probably been hit more this year than any city in southwest Riverside County. They had, they called it the four Fs, the fire, the flood, the fish kill, and the flowers, in that order. And if you don't understand how much and how difficult that city got hit with 140,000 people in two days and overwhelmed the city of their size, the infrastructure collapsed. They totally collapsed. It's actually, it will be a case study for everyone in this region to study of how they managed it. One weekend, they had to declare a local emergency, meaning they had to shut down everything because it overwhelmed every aspect of what they tried to do as a local agency. With that, they called County EMDN, which activated all the other players in the system, which is state resources, Caltrans, to try to get a coordinated effort on how to best deal with the bloom. Until it gets to be 90 degrees for several days in a row, the bloom will be over, the crowds will be gone, but for those who drive south, be careful because there is a lot of traffic, there is a lot of problems, and logistically, it was a nightmare. You can imagine having, just an example, sanitation issues. They had X amount of toilets, they overflowed in two hours, they couldn't pump them. So, what do people have to do when they got to go potty? Figure that one out. 900 cars stopped at one time on the freeway with people getting out, trying to look at the flowers. You saw what happened on Sunday. Major accident due to the traffic congestion. So, hats off. City of Lake Elsinore's had eight mandatory evacuations this year for fire and floods. So, my hats are off to them. They have done an outstanding job for what they had to deal with, and hopefully, our region can learn from them. With that, I want to thank all of you for coming to this council meeting, and we will adjourn, just to make sure, we will adjourn at 20:01. Thank you. The next meeting is May 1st.
Larry, we had, one time, we had 200 people, and we had diggers put into the pool and so on. A lot of things.